We're done with our public hearings for the evening, and we have two study sessions this evening. The first being the Powell-Shelmaud pedestrian linkage study. Charlie.
Michelle DeGussman from Economic Development will introduce this item.
Good evening Chair Jeffrey and members of the Planning Commission. The purpose of the study session tonight is to discuss a proposal developed by the city to develop public pedestrian improvements for the intersection of the Powell Street Bridge and Shelmaud Street area, as well as the surrounding area, which we hope to be integrated into the final design of both the Marketplace expansion and the expansion of Bay Street, known as Site B. Both, excuse me, both Bay Street and Marketplace are currently in the process of pursuing entitlements for their respective projects. As a result of this, this planning stage, the city took this opportunity to develop or to work on developing a coordinated design of public pedestrian improvements for the area where these two major projects will abut each other. Currently, this area is visually bifurcated by the elevated Powell Street Bridge. The area underneath the bridge is fairly dark. The only pedestrian crossing has landings immediately adjacent to the roadway, excuse me, immediately adjacent to the railroads, and about a block away from the roadway, this creates a security issue for the Woodfin Suites, as well as just sort of an unpleasant pedestrian environment. The city has retained the services of WRT to develop this design. The design will be presented to you by John Gibbs very briefly, but just to tell you that the design itself has been extensively vetted by staff, including Planning, Public Works, and Economic Development, as well as it's been brought to the Bike-Ped Committee, and the Agency Board has also seen it, as well as there was a community meeting earlier in the spring. This is being presented to you because it is our hope that the Shelmaud improvements, in particular the Streetscape improvements, will be integrated into the final conditions of approval for the two projects that I previously referenced. Before I introduce John, I would like to apologize to the Commission, the drawing of the Streetscape improvements was not labeled, so I have a couple of hard copies of the labeled drawing, so.
Thank you.
There's, there's just one page, so, just one per. Okay. Okay, but, but it'll all be explained in great detail in the presentation by John Gibbs from WRT, who I would like to introduce now.
Okay, good. So I'll be detailed as well as brief as we go through this, and by all means, we can have lots of questions. It's been a pleasure working with, with city staff on this and all the various folks that we've talked to along the way. Everyone seems to have a story about this part of Emeryville, which we can move to here, you know, essentially the intersection of Shelmaud Way, which is the north-south street there on the west side of the tracks, and Powell Street in the east-west direction. Looking at just the quarter-mile radius, which hopefully you can see on the screen in front of you, this is, this is a walkable area in terms of distance, but if you've tried to walk around there, it's anything but. And from the stories of the elderly folks at Trader Joe's that were, were late in the day at Trader Joe's trying to figure out, how do I get back to the other side? What's the shortest route? Bicycleists in a similar location trying to figure out, how do I get home? What's the best way to get through town now that I'm here? People moving back and forth from the city out onto the waterfront, they're going through this corridor as well. And, and it's just, you know, frankly, it's, it's tough to find your way between the Amtrak Tower, the various Atgrade crossings to the north, Fortieth Street to the south. And in the context of all the development in this area, the lessons learned from previous developments, it's prime time to, to set out a plan to guide the, the critical public open space that needs to be observed as these major projects are moving forward. So here you can begin to see many of the problems rotating north is up on this. You can see the connections from east to west, and the, the main barrier is the general plan process as identified being the, the railroad tracks. And how do you get across back and forth from the waterfront or from the Shelmaud District of Emeryville to the inland areas, whether you're in Emeryville or coming from Berkeley, Oakland, et cetera? If you begin to look at all the various crossing points, Shelmaud, excuse me, Powell Street is very central. There's connections up to Ashby-Bart. It's the main connector to get out to the waterfront in East Shore State Park with its miles of trails and waterfront access. The Powell Street corridor becomes very important, and you know how it currently exists, and we'll show some more photos in just a minute. Also, Shelmaud Way becomes quite important. Hollis Street is serving as a north-south collector, but it's also more of a retail and neighborhood street as well, with new developments coming online. You've got Rudy's across the street, you know, there's more people out walking and moving along these corridors. And on the west side of the rail corridor, Shelmaud Way is really envisioned to be of a similar flavor. Bay Street creating a walkable retail street, now there's residential uses, and that, the idea is that that whole kind of urban experience is extended along Shelmaud. So those become really critical corridors in both directions. Here you can see many of the existing conditions from a bus stop that is, is, you have about a five-foot sidewalk in which to wait for the bus, whether you live here or working here or shopping here, there's a, there's a very difficult transit access. The sidewalks are discontinuous along Shelmaud, you're not only interrupted by, by pillars and columns, but also by driveways and the overall narrowness of the sidewalk. In one place, there was a streetlight and a, and another legal sign placed in the middle of a sidewalk, just making access really difficult. So there's multiple levels of, of impediments to the pedestrian. Here in front of the Woodfin, a great hotel destination, but of a suburban model set back from the street, there's no way to walk, if you're a guest here, to walk from your room to the lobby and out to go to Bay Street, to go to the new Marketplace expansion, et cetera. There's no way to get out of here except for walking through a parking lot and stepping through the planters. These are some of the conditions we're trying to address. And at the north end, there in the Marketplace, and at the northern end of Shelmaud, we really see that the connections need to extend all the way through these parking lot areas and up to where you begin to, to have additional residential developments there on the street. On, along Powell Street, here's a photo at Pellidoo, looking west at the top of the upper left. The sidewalk goes past the gas station from Hollis, and then it just sort of dies. You jog to the, to the right on that photo over about 20 feet until you can cross the street. The sidewalk then dives down underneath the, the Powell Street Bridge, up against the generators and things associated with the terraces. And if you continue, you would then go up the stairs and through the cage structure in order to cross over the tracks. So what are we really trying to do? We're trying to build overall connectivity through various corridors, and in the north-south direction here in this, on to the left, to the right, the orientation, north is to the left, you see Bay Street, and really bringing that retail environment and the pedestrian environment that starts in Bay Street but does not exist on Shelmaud, extend that out to Shelmaud where it rightfully should occur, and that these new developments, be them at the, at the Bay Street, Site B expansion area, or at the Marketplace, that these developments are fronting onto a very public sidewalk. Emphasizing perhaps the, the east side of the street in the interim, and as future development and land use changes begin to occur, this is not part of the study, but we are assuming that as Emeryville continues to change, that there's additional opportunities on the west side of the street, where the Four Points Hotel is, the Lyons Parking Lot, Sherwin-Williams Building, et cetera. And we've begun to anticipate some of those changes and provided recommendations for what those frontages should look like as well. And that this is an interesting pedestrian experience, that there's a series of plazas identified by these yellow circles, that there's events taking place as you, as you walk along this corridor. And along Powell Street, we'll have a series of recommendations for pedestrian connections that facilitate bicycles as well as pedestrians. There's a blue line on here, which is also significant. This is bicycle access associated with the Bay Trail. And so there you can see the blue line moving around the, the Four Points Hotel parking lot. How do people move from the bicycle lanes on Shelmaud or the inland areas of Emeryville to the waterfront? That Shelmaud is, is a bicycle or has bicycle lanes on it, this is one of the ways that you could, you can have connections. There's, as it exists now, you move through the parking lot behind at the Four Seasons Hotel. It's a one-way zone of a parking lot, and the bikes are going both directions. So a future condition should be to emphasize a, a pathway here along that, that frontage in addition to.
John, excuse me, can you use the cursor of the computer to point?
Oh, yeah.
Because they can't see the laser pointer on their monitors.
Good point, and that, yes, save your necks as we do this. So here the cursor, you can see the blue line, but in addition, the, the Powell Street Bridge itself should really serve bicycles as well. So here, we're looking at the overall plan. We're going to go in detail and look first at the southern end, where we have the connection to Bay Street at Christie and Shelmaud. We'll then look more centrally at the Woodfin Hotel, and, and finally up at the Marketplace expansion development area. Then we'll move to Powell Street Bridge. So here you can see there's improvements envisioned to both sides of the streets. We'll talk about some of the phasing opportunities. Here zooming in to what is one of the alternatives for, for the Site B expansion, they're a bit of a moving target in terms of what their final plan is going, is going to look like. We've been working with them to anticipate a couple of different changes, but in any case, how they're presenting themselves to the sidewalk is of great importance to this study, and to provide minimum widths of, of 15 feet or greater along those sidewalks, decorative paving treatments, consistent street trees, and series of, of plazas and openings of the buildings as you move along this corridor. We're concerned about the facades here of any, of a larger floor plate building, or a restaurant, or a retail place. You know, what is the facade of this building? Are they, are they, is it transparent and is it inviting? On the west side of the street, we show on-street parking, that there would be an opportunity to have on-street parking there, and that we specifically encourage that, to help build this as a retail street and neighborhood-serving feel to it, to push that curb line into the development parcel as, as part of any future development agreements, and to provide some on-street parking. There's minimal places where we can accommodate on-street parking through this corridor.
Regarding the on-street parking, have you looked at how that will disrupt traffic flow for southbound movement, and is there a problem?
Correct, and we did, and, and meeting with, with Fair and Peers Consultants as well as Public Works, and that's one of the reasons why it's very difficult to have on-street parking here, is it just slows the traffic down that much more. Everybody's comfortable with showing this at this point.
Seems like it's primarily northbound through this stretch that's critical.
Correct.
But I wanted to make sure you had looked at southbound movement as well. Okay.
Correct, no, very good question, and the, the traffic issues have come up repeatedly, and for the most part, we're not doing any, making any modifications in, in the street.
Okay. And you still can accommodate the on-street pedestrian lane as well, I mean, the bicycle lane as well?
Correct, those are, yeah, those are maintained. In addition, you'll notice in, in various crosswalks, we've had long conversations about how can we maintain as many crosswalks on Shelmaud Street as well, and those have all been analyzed individually and collectively. Moving to the central portion where we have the Woodfin and we have the underpass area of the, of the Powell Street Bridge, the treatments there at the, at the underside of the Powell Street Bridge are very critical. As it exists now, you're crossing essentially a street as well as being in the underpass. So not only is it dark and uninviting, but you're dodging columns, cars, and, and making your way across the street. So the proposal is to maintain a sidewalk condition at that 15 to 20-foot range. Here it begins to widen out, and to maintain a consistent elevation all the way across, and your consistent paving patterns as well. The columns then become elements within a much larger sidewalk.
Why have you, why do you have diagonal scoring? I see in, there's a ramp there with diagonal scoring in the sidewalk, but you've got, is that supposed to be aesthetic, that you've got diagonal scoring in the sidewalk?
Correct, there's a, there's a paving pattern. Let me see if I can put my cursor perhaps where you're talking about.
Yeah, and then in front of Woodfin, every 100 feet or so, it looks like you've got.
Sure, sure, yeah, there, there's a, there's a graphic, and we're presenting, we're, we're proposing that there's a graphic pattern in the sidewalk. Those could be bands of stone or separate colored material, and you're creating these, these random bands as they move across the sidewalk. At that location, there's also a driveway, and that egress in and out of the underpass area is going to be important. As you begin to look at the Woodfin area, we're making significant changes to the frontage of the Woodfin. This requires some trade-offs and some buy-in on the part of the ownership there. The sidewalk as it exists now is about five feet, and as I mentioned, that's where you're dodging light poles, signs, et cetera. The width that we're studying is about 20 feet in width to allow a double row of trees. The double row of trees helps make up for the fact that you don't have a building there, and you really need to provide something on the, on the other side. There's parking that exists currently, and so that parking is, is impacted, much of it is displaced, and so through agreements with the ownership, that parking could be replaced in the underpass area. So instead of it being a free-for-all, it can be somewhat designated, and there's some legal questions about all that, but that, excuse me, but that that can be designated for, for the Woodfin to make up for the impacts in the frontage.
Is that right now, that the street is a city street that's under the bridge, correct?
Correct. And there would need to be provisions for that to be under some direction of the Woodfin Hotel. You can also see here at the cursor, the new plaza access from the sidewalk into the, into the Woodfin foyer and lobby, realigning the crosswalk there. This is a tricky use of a cursor without a mouse, but realigning the crosswalk and, and making a smaller radius on the curb in front of the Sherwin-Williams Building would then help to align a crosswalk with the frontage of that plaza.
And you can fit that without affecting their footprint of the tilt-up there? Or is this involved taking the tilt-up down?
This assumes that the building is replaced.
Okay.
And that because currently the sidewalk there is very narrow.
Right.
And, and we would obviously recommend a wider sidewalk condition, which I'll show on a, on a section in just a minute. So some egress, it's sort of getting back to my point, some egress is necessary for the Woodfin Hotel through the underpass area. In addition, depending on the scheme of Bay Street, there may be some minimal access required, but as I, I'm emphasizing minimal through that underpass area. Here's another example of, of the crosswalks, where currently there's just one crosswalk. We're really emphasizing that there needs to be two crosswalks on both, on both corners to, to truly facilitate a retail, neighborhood-serving, street, pedestrian-type of environment. Looking at the cross-section on the east side in front of the Woodfin, we show about a 20-foot widened sidewalk with parking then on the inside for the Woodfin, the existing conditions on the street, and we show perhaps a new facade there at the Sherwin-Williams Building, and recommending a 15-foot sidewalk, which would, which would require pushing that building back some degree in a future development condition. I think there's going to be, just like there's phasing involved in this, I think there's also prioritization on the part of this associated with the city, and how they're going to enforce many of these recommendations.
Has Woodfin asked for a fence along their frontage there? I see you show a fence on the.
Not, not specifically, although they do have concerns about vandalism and general security for their, for their properties. The intent there was more of a design issue to help screen some of the cars and some of the uses in, in the Woodfin parking lot, that that needs to be a low, a low and perhaps a very decorative element.
Okay.
But I don't know if John mentioned this, but this would be, in many ways, a big improvement for the Woodfin.
Yeah.
It would put a pedestrian entrance on the sidewalk.
Really nice.
Now you have to jump over a hedge.
Right.
To get from the sidewalk into the hotel. It would also realign that entrance so that it would line up with the crosswalk.
Right.
Of, of Shelmaud Street. So it'd put a much nicer frontage of the hotel on the street.
And they've been amicable to the parking situation so far?
To the rearrangement.
We have had some meetings with Woodfin to discuss this idea with them. Part of what's going on underneath the, the bridge is a little bit in limbo because we don't know exactly how Site B is going to deal with their circulation in and out of the parking lot, so that's, we've sort of put, we've discussed the idea with them, but we don't know exactly what the give and takes are going to be, so we haven't gotten down to, to really making them decide.
This could be very useful, though, in helping them make their decision.
Yes.
Perhaps the, the last thing to point out in this diagram is this feature here in the graphic, which is the touchdown from the pedestrian access on Shelmaud, or excuse me, on Powell Street Bridge, which we'll show in just a minute. And these two, these two streets will come together in a, in a few slides from now.
And in reading that, the ramp ends at the sidewalk, not at the back end, and turns up?
Correctly, correct, and that's, that's the critical, one of the critical points of this.
Good.
Here at the furthest, the northern section of the main zone here in front of the Marketplace, maintaining the same sidewalk treatments, the consistency all the way up to this point. The sidewalk narrows just a little bit because of some of the, as currently proposed and underplanning sizes of the building, the sidewalk comes down, I think this is still a reasonable 10 feet with a retail frontage. Again, their building keeps shifting, it's a bit of a moving target. There was an opportunity to also provide on-street parking here, that you can see in front of their building, here in this zone. And again, this did not affect traffic because much of the traffic in the northbound direction was in fact turning on to, to connect up to Christie. There's still a significant amount that's moving through here, but those few parking spaces didn't raise enough, enough issue with the various traffic concerns and constituents. Here can, their, their proposal facilitates the connection from the Amtrak Tower here at the cursor at the back of their parcel, through their development and out to a central plaza. This is realigning the current mid-block crosswalk. This would be widened, turned into a, perhaps a grand feature from the plaza at Marketplace across the street to the existing Borders Books. Borders is, is undergoing their own renovations, perhaps they've, they've already been to see you guys, and their entrance is going to be realigning and fitting into this scheme much better. We show a small little dashed line over here, in that there's a desire on the part of the, of the Marketplace ownership to expand here, actually, to, to add a structure here. We went back and forth about the importance of this green space. They were very clear that it is a private piece of green space, even though it has a very public visual sort of a function. And so there's a design recommendation that the green space is important, but there's an ownership issue that it's, it's their property, and, and to facilitate both might be an option in terms of adding a building here as well as maintaining some amount of green space.
Is that major pedestrian crossing, is that to be signalized at this point? Right now, the pedestrian crossing is.
Yeah, I believe, I believe it's, it's button-activated.
Okay.
And as you continue north, we didn't get into great detail, the sidewalk is maintained as it moves in a, in a sort of a, not a very nice fashion there along Shelmaud at the, in the parking lot, excuse me, but perhaps a more important link is there, the frontage along the retail, and to realign the sidewalk that cuts through the parking lot at the far north end. We saw one of the existing site photos, there's a row of palm trees, but there's a walkway that's not located at those palm trees. Those, those palm trees are actually nicely aligned with the frontage here of the existing Marketplace Tower, and there's the Pete's Coffee Place, and there's the dry cleaners and those sorts of facilities. So to realign that, that walkway in that parking lot would be important. I'm going to move now to the Powell Street Bridge, and there, we know the existing condition, it's not accessible, the accessible route is considered the Amtrak Tower. There's no, there's no easy bicycle connections on, on Powell Street. Bikes are allowed onto the bridge, but, you know, it's, it's obviously a very difficult experience for the bicyclist and the pedestrians. As, as Commissioner Martin had pointed out, you're walking underneath the bridge, almost all, really all the way to the edge of the right-of-way of those tracks before you're taking those stairs to then cross. You're going through this cage structure where you're enclosed with anyone else that you may not want to be in there with. You're not visible to anyone except for those that perhaps are sleeping or hanging out down on the tracks, because the elevation of that walkway is below the level of the roadway, so you're essentially invisible and enclosed. This has repeatedly been a great concern of, of those that we speak to. We proposed two, two retrofit conditions. One, for economic reasons, just looks at the existing structure. And so there you can see it under the minor retrofit, and what that does is it just enhances that experience. It says, we're leaving the elevation where it is, because to make any great changes to it really triggers accessibility issues and raises the cost considerably, but the accessibility issues being most important, so we would add a beautiful structure to it, replace a chain link, and add something that is, that is truly significant. It's lit, perhaps it's translucent, there's a great architectural form to it, and that if I go to one of these next elevations, it would extend up to the height of the roadway. So if perhaps you're not visible, at least the structure and the presence of pedestrians are at least visible. Everyone says, well, that's great, and that would be a much cheaper solution, but a lot of people say, well, obviously the major retrofit really meets our needs in terms of providing the access all the way from Pellidoo, and at a minimum to Shelmaud, but with a, with an expansion to, all the way up to Christie. Here, as you can see, is a very faint line all the way up to the Christie intersection here. So the major retrofit provides that same architectural type of a, of a cantilevered bridge structure, something that, again, that's very signature for the city of Emeryville, something that's beautiful sculptural, and making up for the fact that there are so few connections in the east-west direction across this rail corridor. Something that would be lit, and something that would be quite visible from various perspectives in the city. There could be a, a staircase here at Horton, as well as then the major touchdown would be at Shelmaud, and that was the ramp that I pointed out in the plan view. A series of larger gateway structures, we do see this as a major visual and entry corridor into the city, and as you're driving by on the freeway, your current view there over Denny's and the gas station, and you see the Four Points Hotel, and then you sort of see this, you know, ratty little bridge there. And could this really, could, could these really become signature elements that are really marking a procession into the city? Maybe it's late, I'm taking a few liberties, but I think it's defensible.
Their existing.
It's not an attractive bridge as it exists. Here we go to the, to the minor retrofit. You can see the, the walkway lower than the height of the roadway, but the structure expands upward to be very visible. And looking at the major retrofit, either of these forms actually are applicable to each one, but the point here is that the walkway is raised up to the elevation of the roadway. It's lit, it has this beautiful structural components to it. The walkway would be about, about 10 feet wide, it would widen out if we can match it to the exact height of the bridge and use some of the existing structure of the bridge in order to actually widen it out just a little bit further than the 10 feet. It may have a railing on it to separate it from the roadway. Bikes would still be allowed in the street, but it's, the thinking is that recreational bicyclists would be using this walkway as well, and there would be signage and some legal concerns about how does this function as a multi-use path, whether bikes need to in fact dismount, but the fact is, is that if you're a family riding your bike perhaps to go out to East Shore Park, or you're elderly and you're just not comfortable on the street, you could use this facility as well, and you wouldn't be carrying your bike up and over a, the set of stairs.
The staff report did say that there was an assumption that bikes would be walked across, so is that, is that a set assumption, or is that something that could, that's possible?
That should supersede, that should supersede what I just said. So the, the recommendation would likely be that, that people would, would walk their bikes across. You know, when you, when, when, in function, in everyday function, I think it will remain to be seen how it, you know, how it would actually operate, that that could be, that could be the legal basis for the operation. The height of the terraces is important here. You can see this is the top of their garage structure, and at the highest point of the bridge, you are in fact roughly equal with the terraces. The, the panels on the side of this bridge, we would imagine that as you became, as you became. Um, the, the panels on the side of this bridge, we would imagine that as you became, as you, as you raised an elevation, there were some visual intrusion issues, you would start to use more translucent. So you weren't able to look right into somebody's, uh, somebody's apartment for those, that segment of the bridge. And this is, was, this, this is a fairly short segment, uh, where you're, where you're adjacent and at, at that elevation.
I actually attended the community meeting, and I don't recall anyone from terraces showing up. Were they notified?
They were notified.
Okay.
There were people from the terraces there.
Okay.
And actually, I think that I didn't hear a lot of concerns about this, but it was something that we raised internally. Uh, and so perhaps that helped alleviate it, uh, because it would, I think it would be an obvious concern.
With this major retrofit, is the, those are the standard Emeryville lights?
Those are the-
That you replace rather than what, the sixties?
Right, there's currently the Cobra Heads there on the bridge, and this, this photo uses, yeah, the standard Emeryville, uh, light, light.
Standard.
You could also do something that was in keeping with all the other design elements perhaps as well. Um, but the, the upgrade is, uh, is recommended.
And the minor retrofit, one of the, one of the reasons there's caging on top of that crossing right now is the debris that rains down on pedestrians. So this is like a perfect bank shot for somebody throwing trash through there. What was your idea about cyclone fencing to intercept trash? How were you gonna address the trash issue reflecting down on people here?
Mm-hmm. Um, I think that's a good point, perhaps that's something that, that needs to be factored in.
Okay. You hadn't thought about some kind of fencing or something?
Hadn't thought about, hadn't thought about that specifically, you've, you've raised a new issue. I, I would think that, uh, the guardrail on the side could be modified, that could be turned into something that was a little more of a decorative fencing element that could prevent, you know, you're, you're talking about a car kicking up a scrap of-
Mm, people throwing debris over the bridge.
So, uh, from a car?
Well, you can see cans and bottles on top of that cyclone fencing right now to the bridge. That's just what people do.
Right.
Unfortunately, and it lands on people. If that, if the cyclone fencing weren't there on the overhead to the existing pathway, it would land on top of people using that pathway.
No, that's, that's a good point, I think that's something that could be added to this concept. Um, just a quick point, there's great examples of great bridges throughout the world. Reading did, uh, did their Calatrava Bridge across the, uh, across the Sacramento River. Barcelona and, uh, Germany, London, uh, this, there's one in here from Arizona. Uh, great bridges exist, and they're, they're really interesting ways of bringing, um, both notoriety, but also really emphasizing how important this connection really could be. Uh, there were different phases understood or devised for this. The first phase, this is retro, major retrofit only, the first phase being from Horton over to Shellmount. It would require staircases on, at Horton, and then the ramp structure at Shellmount. That could be a Phase One. A Phase Two, the extension all the way up to Pellidoo. This is probably a reasonable minimum pro- minimal project because you would have accessibility all the way from Pellidoo and down the ramp at Shellmount. And then, in a future condition, to extend all the way out to Christie. Uh, the Christie extension, uh, re- does require a change at, uh, at the good guys now, the lazy boy. Um, but, you know, something in the future seems appropriate there.
So that was a stairway on Horton, not a ramp?
Correct.
And did you look at an alternative that instead of creating a new stair at Horton, tried to salvage the existing stair and incorporate that into the major retro, the first phase of the major retrofit? To save the cost of a new stairway?
Uh, that was not specifically looked at. The, there is an Amtrak project which is already going to go in and demolish that and move it over twenty feet.
Are they gonna rebuild it?
And they're gonna rebuild it in kind.
And when is this supposed to happen? Let's use that money to rebuild this one.
We, we don't know the specifics if they're going to rebuild it or, or salvage the stair. They just had a, um, it's been a plan for some time that they were gonna move out the stairway one more, more bay 'cause they needed additional width for their spur, but that project was, uh, put on hold a couple of years ago, and it's been on hold indefinitely.
Okay.
And in fact, it hasn't great, had great impact on, on our work for the most part. Um, I, I'm not sure that economically you would really save that much by trying to salvage the existing unless you in fact just left it in place. And are you talking about moving it, or are you talking about-
No, I'm just leaving it.
Just leaving it there and trying to connect to it?
Using it as a tie-in.
Yeah, that, it wasn't specifically looked at because it's tucked so far back in there, and the cost of a new stairs, I don't think would be that great in the context of the project.
Is there any possibility of putting the pedestrian bike path on the, uh, south side of Powell Street?
Good question.
Because it would tie in much better to getting out onto the peninsula.
No, ex-
Traffic and crossings.
Exactly, that, that has not been overlooked. The biggest problem is that there's an existing building that, uh, is here. And it's an existing, uh, old, old brick warehouse, and it's right up against the edge of the bridge. And there is just simply not enough room to move through there. Um, also, you know, with, with Bay Street's discussion, it's unclear how, uh, how a pedestrian circulation would begin to interface with some of their, you know, some of the work that they're doing at Bay Street. There may be opportunities there, but there may also be problems there. So it's been, it's been agreed from the start that there's, there would, there's an affinity to the south side of the street, but technically it was, uh, it was infeasible. This whole concept in fact could be applied to the south side if something changed, uh, in the future. That'll, that'll be part of the report.
Could you talk a little bit about what, um, the triggers for the accessibility issues? If you're talking about doing a Phase One that has a stairway on the east side of it, then obviously the whole crossing is not accessible. How did, where does the ADA kick in at what?
I think the, the city attorney needs to weigh in on, on how that, how that works and at what point the city's at risk. Currently, uh, the city is, my understanding, and other people can step in, but that the city is, is assuming accessibility is provided at the Amtrak Crossing, and that this, as it currently exists, doesn't need to, to be accessible. Um, at what point, when you start moving things around, do you trigger ADA requirements? Uh, you know, I think you, you do, uh, quite quickly. Perhaps in a phased approach, it may be prudent to, uh, to hold on full accessibility until the second phase, uh, is implemented. I, I don't think I have a, a great answer for you, but, uh, that is an issue.
Did you look into, uh, forgetting about doing anything on Powell Street and building a separate ramp further south that, uh, across the railroad tracks with pedestrian bikes?
Hmm, no, not-
Going through Bay Street to-
Uh, there is, there is, there is a proposal for a, a pedestrian bridge, uh, behind Bay Street near Temescal Creek um, that connects into the back area of Chiron. The approach here is that this upper segment of Shellmount, uh, with the new residential uses and the, the major retail components, also the fact that Powell Street is a, is a very public thoroughfare and major connector, uh, for the region, that Powell Street itself is actually, is a really critical place to, to provide this sort of connectivity.
I just wanted, that, that's a separate project, and this project doesn't, doesn't affect that.
Okay, I mean, it just-
It's not meant to replace it or anything.
Where it lands on the west side coming down is not a very convenient spot.
Where the Powell Street lands?
Yeah, where, you know, we just looked at this, uh, lazy boy site, and there isn't even a cross-ramp there. Uh, there isn't even a cross-ramp on the, uh, going south from that corner either. And so we're kind of landing in no man's land.
Perhaps the importance of that pedestrian crossing would, uh, would be realized, or the lack of that pedestrian crossing would be realized by, uh, this sort of a commitment.
Unless this thing stays up in the air and also goes across.
And I think the council actually is looking at ways to reevaluate the Christie-Powell intersection and possibly providing, um-
Yes.
Scatter crossing at that location. So we've got four crosswalks there.
We're looking at ways, uh, the, the council's directed staff to look at ways to improve that landing so that it is more pedestrian-friendly. And even though it wasn't within the scope of this work very specifically, we did look a little bit at. That's what the last phase would be, it would involve a redevelopment of that parcel and allow for better pedestrian access throughout that, that area.
I noticed under the agency, um, reference on page four, the staff report, there was a suggestion to, um, modify the north edge of the existing bridge and try to get some additional space there. And, uh, this is back in the agency meeting in April. And the staff report says this option requires additional investigation as there are significant public safety structural and traffic issues that must be worked out to determine if such an alternative is feasible. What exactly, there, the suggestion was to take out the rail and the curb to the bridge and tie it into the on-grade extension?
The suggestion was to try, try to leave the bridge alone, not add a new structure that can lever, but instead facilitate pedestrian and bikes within this existing-
Oh, just fit it on the existing platform?
Is there a way to fit it all in there?
Oh.
Bikes, uh, widen one side for a sidewalk, it could be north side, it could be south side. Um, and so that was the recommendation, and all that complexity, uh, is, uh, is still there and is under discussion.
But as I recall, there's no median in the center of that bridge there, just a stripe.
There's, there's- Correct. Correct, there's, there's no center median, the lanes are quite wide, but also, you know, there's, there's a lot of traffic and a lot of, uh, good-sized trucks on the bridge as well. Um, and these little, what, what you could imagine be, is a sidewalk here, that's two feet wide.
Okay.
That's not a sidewalk, so there would be some, some major changes, and, and it's, it's complex, and it's, uh, that's, that's being discussed.
Okay.
I believe that just brings us then to the intersection where the Powell Street Bridge and that, uh, that ramp structure touches down and meets Shellmount where these, these two elements really come together. Uh, and you can see, uh, the bridge or the cantilever structure here connecting over to the ramp. You have these series of balconies that you're looking up and down the street. Uh, lighting treatments that tie those, those balconies and of the ramp across all the various columns. An art project, uh, and lighting of those columns that begins to express, you know, something artistic, whether it's, uh, whether it's the, the DNA structures from Chiron or city, uh, city's history, whatever it may be. Those things are, are celebrated and tied together there. Um, you can also see enhanced transit stops in this, in this area, and with the additional sidewalk width, we can actually accommodate a shelter as well as passage on the sidewalk and waiting for the bus.
Mm-hmm. Now, this, this elevation shows a ramp touchdown on the south side of the support, and the footprint shows it on the north side.
Uh, so this, this is looking east, so the ramp is on the, is on the north side? Does, was that your question?
No, but I, I'm just looking at the plan view that you have with the landscape improvements, which shows the ramp on the north side next to the Woodfin parking lot rather than on the Powell Street side of the turn to the ramp. I assume you've looked at this and it fits with the slope requirements on the ramp?
Correct, this, yeah, this meets, uh, there's a series of landings and the length of the ramp is determined by-
So we've got three turns going up the whole-
We do.
System, okay.
And this touches down there in the corner of the Woodfin property, and their parking is mitigated through the other improvements in the underpass. And speaking of the underpass, uh, even though we've pulled all the public access out of that underpass area because the ramp and the, the staircase that exists, that's all brought out to the sidewalk. Um, that under, underside, there's still great precedence for treatments in there using something as simple as light. If there are any, are any, um, customers that are using it from Bay Street, the guests from Woodfin as well, uh, it should still be an inviting, uh, and interesting, uh, zone. And as you're a pedestrian walking along Shellmount, to really have that animated and, and lighted, uh, would, could really be fantastic. There you have it. That concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any more questions.
I see you've got a future extension of the streetscape improvements going north and nothing going south. Has there been any talk about what happens south of Christie and Shellmount? Especially since there is another hotel down there and there's no sidewalk on one side and-
Right, what you can do.
Bus stop down there, yeah.
The, the scope of their work was primarily to look at was what was going to be affected by, um, Marketplace and Site B. And so Site B only extends to, um, to that area, and then we looked a little on the other side of the street. But a big part of the intention is to have the developers implement those streetscape improvements as part of their, uh, the development of their projects. So that's why we didn't look at the, the farther extent. We were sort of trying to hop on an opportunity of having these big developments and having everything ground up.
And actually, the, um, as you know, the pedestrian amenities on Bay Street are pretty nice. I mean, that's pretty well taken care of. Uh, you're referring to Shellmount Street, I think. On the east side of Shellmount, uh, as you say, there's no sidewalk on that side, there's not much we can do about that. Uh, there's a service walk there, there's no room for a sidewalk, it's kind of a done deal. We, I think we regret that decision now, but there, we really can't change it at this point. Um, there is a sidewalk on the west side of the street, which actually is pretty nice. It's got a nice landscape pergola, it may not be real well-maintained, but it's not a bad pedestrian experience on the west side from Christie down to, uh, just before you get to the Marriott. So unfortunately, it is the backside, if you will, of both Powell Street Plaza and Bay Street Centers, so that's something to try to improve in the future. We are, we are, uh, Madison Marquette is working on some improvements to the Shellmount frontage of the Bay Street project. In fact, they're under construction right now.
Um, in terms of the streetscape improvements, which in the staff report, it's identified that the thought was that the, the developers would pay for those. Would that include under the Powell Street Bridge? So with the new sort of landscaping and parking and hopefully maybe some cool lighting under there? Would that be paid by the developers part of the streetscape improvements, or would that be part of the bridge project?
That would most likely be part of the bridge project. Um, and part of that too is also, we don't know to the degree to which, uh, Bay Street will be interfacing underneath the bridge. Our hope is that they don't have any traffic egressing or ingressing out of there, but we don't, we don't know that at this point. So if they don't really use it, um, the ideal would be that, it would be part of the, the bridge work.
Well, I, I think, um, just comments overall, it's great to see especially improvements to Shellmount and Shellmount Way, especially Woodfin. I assume this is something the city would participate in covering the cost of that frontage, given that they're not changing anything there. Aesthetically, the important thing to me is the tree and the activation of that space. The idea, the crisscross scoring on the pavement and different treatment, I think it's an unnecessary distraction. The focus should be on the trees, what landscaping's put in there and the uses. And I, I assume that Hank would probably agree to set up a sidewalk that requires special treatment or special pigment or anything else is a complication that I don't think most people would notice, and I think eventually would look dated. I, I don't, you know, the lighting, if it's done well, is okay. Hopefully it won't end up being a garish industrial, [laugh] lighting fixture in twenty years. I don't wanna see fluorescent and bright pink and-
Are you referring to the underpass?
Uh, underpass and your big standards on either side with the big Q-tip with the bright fluorescent pink on top, uh, the beacons. Well, I'd like to see it done subtly and being dramatic through its subtlety rather than something that is glaring and saying, "Look at me." I think the minor retrofit is a waste of money. Um, I think it's gonna be problematic with debris. I think the design is really interesting, but I think physically it's gonna be a problem. And the only way to address that is putting up another cyclone fence, which then detracts from the aesthetics of it. 'Cause you gotta keep people from getting hit in the head by a bottle, which happens. And I don't, you know, the money for that location should be spent just maintaining it until we get the money to do the major retrofit. And I'd actually like to see Phase One and Phase Two combined, so that's all accomplished at once. I don't think putting in a half a ramp system- I don't think putting in a half a ramp system solves the issue. I'd like to see the ramp go all the way from Pellidoo to Shellmount. Um, and, you know, any way that that can be accomplished makes sense to me. But overall, I think it'd be great improvement to the area and I'm glad people are paying attention to the pedestrian, uh, bicycle and aesthetic sense in that area.
Yeah, I, I agree with Jim on the phasing. It would seem to me that phase one and phase two would, if, if it was financially feasible to, uh, combine those. And then, um, it would have been nice to see a, a water feature somewhere on some of these larger entry plazas, but it's just nice to see all this, all the seating and, uh, and, and all the trees. And, uh, I guess the city will pay close attention to what kind of trees those are and we'll get a nice streetscape there. I walk and bike down, uh, here from Forty-Sixth Street all the time, so it would be nice to be able to get over Powell Street. And it's also nice to see that there's added places to, to sit down because there's really not much of that in Emeryville as it is. Just a place to sit down and not get, uh, not be forced to eat. So I think it looks beautiful and we've been looking at it for a long time, so. Especially over at the Marketplace expansion. I think it looks great over there and the bridge. I agree with you that, you know, a bridge adds a sense of, um, just progress. And a, a really cool-looking, uh, bridge would be great there. We need to get over the railroad tracks.
Yeah, I, I would agree that a statement bridge would be a really nice thing to have at the entry to the city, especially, you know, that's the main thing that people see when they get off the freeway. But I also agree with Jim that the minor retrofit seems like a waste of funds because as a user of that overcrossing, I think the three basic problems are that, one of them is that the lighting on either end, when you touch down, is so abysmal and just putting in simple lighting to make the path feel safe would be a huge improvement. Number two is that the existing stairs double you back towards the trains, so you feel like you're unprotected from the back, you feel more invisible and you're dumped into a dark little pocket in the corner facing a concrete wall. And if, part of the reason I was asking about when the ADA access kicks in is that there might be some very simple ways of turning that stair around so that it came down and dumped you out at the street rather than dumping you out at the concrete wall there, which I think would make people feel much safer and much more inclined to use it, especially at night. And the third thing is that being below the level of the street and being invisible at that point is bad enough in the daytime and the nighttime, it's horrible. There's plenty of lightweight metal building materials that could perhaps be used to raise the level of the walkway without removing the existing structure, without doing an entire improvement, but just adding some stairs up another few feet so that you would in fact be closer to the level of the, the road and be visible from the road without having to redo the entire pedestrian walkway there. So I think it would be great if somebody could look into those kind of alternatives that were simpler, that were not redoing the whole bridge, but that addressed the primary sort of safety and comfort issues in using that overcrossing. And I, I guess it does depend a lot on whether ADA kicks in and you need to have the ramps if you make that level of improvements. But getting up to the road level above the current walkway and not feeling so vulnerable when you get down to the bottom of the stairs would be huge improvements. The streetscape, that'll be great. Wider sidewalks, trees, lively street, places for people to be. That's what we need down there. We need places for people to feel comfortable down there.
Well, I think the, uh, as you said, the, the streetscape along Shellmount is terrific. Uh, I'm a little concerned about the Powell Street pedestrian crossing, particularly the way it lands, uh, particularly on the west side. And, uh, I guess there needs to be more study as to how it ties in with Christie. Hopefully it could come all the way across without having stairs. Uh, I don't know, is the, is the roadway too steep to meet ADA standards or, uh?
We've been looking at it and it seems as though the roadway is like, is, may actually be, uh, within some ADA guidelines, whether it needs to be a ramp or it may be under a ramp. The problem is, is we keep going back to our data and we don't, we, we can't actually determine exactly what that slope is on the existing bridge. But it's, it's very close and we've, our schemes accommodate it either way.
You're talking about the west side of the bridge coming down to Christie from, from the top?
Both sides, actually.
Well, it's a little less steep on the east side.
I, my measurements, 'cause I went back, 'cause we've been talking about this. I went back and measured our drawings and I actually, I, I emphasized mostly on the east side, but I thought that I had looked over on the west side as well. Maybe the west side is, it, it does exceed it slightly. I'd have, I'd have to go back and check. But also, the problem is we just don't have the, quite the, the exact grade elevations for the roadway.
If you could drop the pedestrian ramp below the road level at the very top just to make sure the ADA standards were met at both ends, couldn't you?
Yeah, there, there's a number of subtle changes which could accommodate it because our, at this level of analysis, we're close.
I think part of the goal here is to try as much as possible to keep the pedestrian walkway on the bridge to be more like a sidewalk of the bridge and not below the street level the way it is now.
Yes. Um, I think the streetscape proposal is great and, um, I, well, I understand Jim's comment about some of the distinctive pavement treatment there. I think it would be nice to see something, at least at the, um, uh, crosswalk areas, that could tie that in and announce that, "Is this is where you can cross?" And, and so extend whatever you do in the street onto the sidewalk. Um, and that would probably minimize some of the, um, the concerns that Hank would have. But I, I think that's important to constantly announce where the pedestrians go. And we need all sorts of, um, aides to help them so that they feel comfortable and safe on the street. Um, I really, you know, the, the issue with the phasing, I think both, um, Gail and Jim make really good points about that. And I too feel that we want to keep the pedestrian elevated and visible. And maintaining them at that lower level, even with the lighting and everything, I just don't think it's a positive experience for people when they're moving across the bridge. Uh, so I would like to see something where we're, we're up, you know, maybe there's some midpoint where we can at least have people up and they, 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 they feel a little bit safer and more visible. Um, and then finally, I, I think we could do some very creative and innovative lighting with it not being pink neon or anything like that. I really would love to see some lighting under the bridge as well as on top. And just in terms of keeping it in sort of various, uh, there's such a range of white lighting, for example, that you can have cool and warm and soft. And, and I, I think we could do something really interesting with subtle light, but something that, that really makes you want to go, "Wow, this is cool." Plus, it's providing that safety element that is, uh, missing there now. And people are not gonna feel comfortable unless they have a really nice lighting program under the bridge. Well, those are my comments at this time, but this is really a great first step. Thank you, staff, for all your hard work on this. You're doing a great job.
Thank you. Well, and thanks to WRT for all their hard work.
Absolutely. Well, I'm sort of lumping-
It's part of our staff.
I'm lumping WRT in with that.
There's so much contracted staff.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay, our final item on the-